Okay, folks, we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the last meeting of 2023. This is Tuesday, December 19th. On the agenda tonight, it includes the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from December 5th, 2020 through council meeting, Community Center Commission, December 11th, EDA, December 11th, Library Board, December 12th, Planning Commission, December 12th. Also included are the regular bills. Does the council have any questions? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda and regular bills.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jenny. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Move right into department heads. Good evening.
Good evening. There, thank you. Kari Hansen here from the library. Just wanted to tell you some of the things we've had going on. We have had weekly story time that has been well-attended. We have a group of handcrafters that show up once a week for a program called In Stitches, and we have anywhere from two to 10 people, adults, that bring their crochet and knitting and cross-stitch items. They're there for two hours every Thursday afternoon. We have a little competition going on called Upcycle Ornament. We asked people to make, adults and kids, to make an ornament or a holiday decoration with something that, with materials that they already have at home. They were not to go out and purchase anything. We've had a lot of participants in that, so we've got those on display at the library. And then last Thursday, we participated in the Christmas by candlelight program, so we stayed open until 7:00, and we had almost 200 people that came through the library that night. We had a craft for the families to make together. They made a greeting card that we then donated to our senior living facilities here in Wyndham. So that was, and the kids were very excited to know that they were making a card for somebody to help them celebrate Christmas. And they were also given then an ornament to take home, a little craft that they could do at home. And then we had some games and treats. It was a lot of fun, very, very well-attended, so we will continue participating in that. So. Oh, and then our winter reading program starts in January, January 2nd. Adults sign up, challenge themselves to read 12 books from the beginning of January to the end of March, and there's different prizes they can select for participating.
Oh, a lot going on at the library. Any questions for Kari? 200 people coming in that night. That's very good attendance.
Yes.
And we're happy for you?
Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Great.
So, thank you.
Other department heads, here we go. John?
John Nelson, Liquor Store Manager. I met with my liquor commission last week, and one decision we decided to do was winter hours. So from January 2nd to March 31st, Monday through Thursday, we're going to reduce our hours by one hour. Instead of closing at 9:00, we're going to close at 8:00 at night. So we'll be open Monday through Thursday, 10 to 8; Friday, Saturday, 10 to 10; and then Sunday will be as normal, 11 to 4. With the upcoming holidays, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve both fall on Sundays, so we will follow normal store hours of 11 to 4 on those two days. Will be closed Christmas Day by state statute and New Year's Day. So that is the update on store hours coming up. As far as construction progress, we had an eventful weekend with the rain. If you've looked, they've connected the two roof lines together. They were waiting on the vapor barrier, which I believe still has not shown up yet, so the contractor has gotten a little bit of an earful from me. We had lots of water in the back room of the liquor store this weekend, soaking up lots of boxes, so we had to move a lot of product and clean up and dry up a lot of water. So, other than that, construction is progressing nicely. Middle of January, the hopes is to install the two new coolers and then remove the existing cooler. They'll begin work on the east end of the liquor store, east side, with that area. So after the holiday, we'll be removing some shelving and putting it in a different area of the store to display wine. Some of the beer stacks and that will get eliminated from the floor for shelving space. So the next few months, a lot of customers will see a lot more of the construction progress because it'll start occurring inside the building, main building, so. So lots of things going on. There may be some days of shutdown, partial days, full days, just depending on, and we'll do our best to use our Facebook page to get that information out to our customers as soon as possible. If we do have staff working, which most of the time we should, we do have an online website that you can shop at, riverbendliquor.com, and from there you can do a pickup order. That way, when we need to eliminate customer traffic in the store, we still have a way for customers to get their products, so.
Any questions for John besides one I have? Marv?
So, John, what was the rationale behind the reduction of hours?
It's just a little bit slower in the winter. During that time, it's cold, most people are home. The last hour to two hours of the day are very, very slow, and it's a lot of twiddling of thumbs by the employees at that time. It was brought up to me last year. I personally like to see consistent hours, but it's something that we discussed, and we're going to give it a try this year, so.
Does the council need to take action on a change in hours, Steve?
It probably wouldn't hurt, I mean, because the council set hours when you open for Sunday sales, things like that, so it probably would be beneficial just for memorialization of the decision.
I'll make a motion for the new hour change for the winter hours.
Howard, second.
Motion made by Scott, seconded by Marv, to approve the change in hours for the liquor store. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Another question I have in regards to your comments on wet boxes, product, that sort of thing. Was there anything that had to be returned or that was nonusable, John?
No, all the bottles are fine. It was mainly just the boxes that they were in were damaged, soaked, unusable. We had other boxes available to put that stuff in. It's just now it's not as organized as it was, so.
And the reason I bring that up, because contractors should have builder's risk insurance if needed, and I'm sure Steve would quiz you on that if you needed to know.
We already do it.
All right, very good, thank you. Other department heads?
Jason Sikor, Electric Superintendent. Being as I missed the last meeting where we had a pay request, figured I'd fill you guys in on where it's at. Transmission line's kind of at a standstill. Did some punch list items. And then truck garage, we had a punch list meeting today, so we got temp occupancy going on that, so we are parking inside now. We got a few minor odds and ends to wrap up there, but building's looking good, heat, all that stuff's going on. And then the generation plant, we had a progress meeting today, so footings are poured, they're backfilling sand today, so they're maybe going, if this weather holds out, we might see some floor, maybe one generator pad poured, so. Expecting steel to show up mid-January and then start erecting some of the buildings, so. Been very fortunate with the weather on this project.
Absolutely. Comments from the council? Marv?
Just driving by the new generator portion. It looks pretty interesting where all the concrete is. Some is going up in the air and some is all over the place, so it's interesting watching it come along.
The tall ones sticking up are for the stacks, where the stacks will sit, so.
That must carry quite a bit of weight. That looks like a lot of concrete.
Yeah, it's more wind stability than weight, just because they're going to be 45 feet and they're designed to be 50. If we add more generators, we'll have to raise the stacks, so, down the road, so it's designed to go another five feet for future, so.
That's why I don't understand anything about electricity. Or one, two. Okay, any other final questions? All right. And I don't think we have any pay requests or anything tonight, so.
Nope.
Okay. You're off the hook for later then. Thank you for the comments.
Yep.
Appreciate it. While we're at it, any other department heads? Okay. Next item here, we're having some technical difficulties. Yep, we got, it'll be shown on the TV, the council will not be able to see the screen. So Steve, I'll let you lead into this with, oh, John maybe want to introduce that as far as the hospital audit.
Hi, good evening. John Pearl, CFO of the hospital. Ryan Struce is online. He's going to present our fiscal year 2023 financial audit. It was accepted by the governing board at their October meeting, and so we're presenting it to you tonight, so I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Can you go and try it again?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear him okay? Yep.
Okay. Steve, do you want me to share my screen, or do you folks have stuff in front of them?
We, can you share it? It'll be on there. Is that right? No, yeah, I can't. We're having trouble, the laptop is not connecting into our system here in the chamber, but the council was provided the presentation and the audit information in their council packet, so.
Okay.
They've got laptops and phones and that kind of thing to find it on there, so.
Perfect. That sounds good, awesome. Well, appreciate the time here this evening. As John mentioned, my name is Ryan Struce. I'm a principal at Flipp Marson Allen, who's in charge of the audit for Wyndham Area Health for 2023. I'm going to focus my time on the report, which has the graphs and ratios included and also gives kind of a summary of the audit. Certainly, if you have questions on specific footnotes or any numbers within the financial statements, I have those pulled up as well. Happy to talk, take any questions that you might have on the financial statements, but for the sake of this meeting, was going to just focus on the governance report communication, which is a PowerPoint. So flipping to slide four, results of professional services. Overall, significant events and transactions, I think the main thing. This year was the Para Gatsby 68-type pension adjustment. It was, it ended up being negative for the organization by about $750,000. That's how much hit the operating income related to the adjustment that was made. As a reminder, the actuarial calculation for that estimate or calculation is through 6/30/2022, and if you can put yourself back about a year and a half, you can, really the main change there was the investment reduction, so there wasn't very good investment performance at mid-2022, and as a result, the pension liability increased and there was an income by about $750,000. For 2023, for the hospital, there's a new standard that needed to be adopted, Gatsby 87. You may be familiar with that, but what that did was it took your off-balance-sheet leases, your operating-type leases, and we're required to record those as an asset and liability on your balance sheet. So we worked with management and we were able to get that adoption of the standard implemented. It's about a $600,000 adoption, so it really didn't impact your profit and loss statement, but it did impact overall the balance sheet for about $600,000. As a part of the audit, we worked with management on a few proposed adjustments, mainly related to the Para Gatsby 68 adjustments that we typically work with management on, but no adjustments that we considered auditor-proposed or that we considered material enough to present, to have a material weakness related to those adjustments. Subsequent events, one thing that did come up and is in the audit report, prior to issuance of the audit, the financing for the MOB project was obtained, so we added a brief note related to that, that issuance for roughly $20 million. And then from a control perspective, material weakness related to the control over the financial reporting, consistent with the prior year. We, as the independent auditor, assisted management with the preparation of the financial statements, so it's a material weakness over the financial reporting process. This is consistent with what we've had in the past. Management does review the financial statements in detail and accepts responsibility for the preparation of the financial statements, but since we assisted with it, we have to have a material weakness related to that. Next, required governance communications on page six. As independent auditors, we're engaged by governance to express an opinion on the fair presentation of financial statements in conform with the GAAP. Our opinion is unmodified, which is a clean audit opinion. It's really what you're setting out for when you engage an independent auditor to express an opinion on your financial statements, so we're happy to report that. We plan to perform our audit to obtain reasonable, non-absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement. As a part of our audit, we do evaluate internal control over the financial reporting, and we utilized a risk-based audit approach that we'll talk about on the next slide. We performed the audit according to the planned scope, timing previously communicated, so we started working through our audit procedures in June of 2023. We wrapped most of the audit up in the summer months, and there was a few items that we were working through with management to complete here over the last couple of months, and we issued the final report December 4th. Next slide, so slide seven. Accounting policies are outlined in Note 1 of the financial statements. As I mentioned, Gatsby 87, the lease standard was adopted. You'll see some additional footnotes related to that lease standard. It mentions it in Note 1, and there's also a separate lease note as well, that it displays both the impact of the adoption of the standard and the related restatement, as well as the note itself that shows the maturities of the leases and whatnot. So accounting policy is deemed appropriate, no unusual transactions occurred. As I mentioned on the last slide, we do focus our testing using a risk-based model, so what we like to do is, you know, in addition to testing the balance sheet accounts in very great detail, we spend a lot of time on the accounts receivable valuation, third-party payer settlement estimates. So what we do there is, because the valuation of accounts receivable really is the largest estimate on the balance sheet, we prepare our own independent estimate compared to what management has for their estimate. For AR, we feel good about that estimate at the end of the year. We think it's consistent and conservative with where it's been in the past. No management bias indicated, deemed reasonable. The uncertainty on those investments is disclosed within the financial statements. Significant financial statement disclosures, net patient service revenue, deposits and investment, long-term debt, defined pension benefit pension plan, and then the other post-employment benefits. Required supplemental information is included in the financial statements, including the management discussion analysis, schedule of employer's share of net pension liability, schedule of employer's contributions, and other post-employment benefit plan disclosures. We're engaged to report in relation to the financial statements as a whole, no changes in preparation, et cetera. We did receive a signed representation letter prior to finalizing the audit reports. No difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no issues discussed with prior to retention as independent auditors, no disagreements, contentious matters, et cetera. Outside of the audit taking maybe a little bit longer than it typically has in the past due to timing of information, I know that management's been working hard to try to get the MOB financing obtained, and there's a lot of work done into that. I know we also assisted with that, also the adoption of Gatsby 87. You know, we didn't have any issues getting the information or reaching conclusions. We feel that the information that we reviewed was accurate, complete, so we feel good about where everything ended up by the time we issued the audit. Internal control matters, I kind of mentioned that, the main, the material weakness is related to financial statement preparation. I'll pause there. Any questions?
I'm getting the Feds, there's no questions.
Perfect. I'll go through the financial ratios briefly, and then I think that will conclude our presentation unless you have additional questions. Typical or consistent with what we've done in the past, starting on page 11, we've included some financial ratios, comparative data used. The year-end of the hospital's a little bit different as being a 4/30, so sometimes the years don't align with what we're seeing in the industry perfectly, but it does give you a high-level overview of how the hospital's doing. So we've included the hospital, CLA clients with revenue less than $50 million, Minnesota CLA clients, and the Gold Standard clients, which is the high-performing top 35 Gold Standard facilities across the country. Starting on page 12, we have the operating margin. This measures operating income as a percentage of net patient service revenue plus other operating revenues. You can see in 2023, the organization ended at 3%. It ran about 16.5% last year. As I mentioned, to kind of kick off the meeting, that Gatsby 68 pension adjustment was about $750,000, and if you look at the financial statements, the operating income for the organization in total was $750,000, so that cut their operating margin in half. Probably would have ended up in that 5% to 6% range without it. With that being said, what we're seeing in healthcare space, you've maybe read articles in the newspaper, it's been tough for healthcare facilities across the country. In 2023, dropping volumes and whatnot, so 3% operating margin, even with that Gatsby adjustment, it's really strong from what we're seeing from our client base in 2023, so overall, organization's doing a nice job of managing the business and continuing to manage expenses in these times where there's been a lot of wage pressure and whatnot. Total margin, this adds back in, non-operating revenues, which for you is really kind of your income. Kind of nice to be able to get a little bit of return on those investments with the interest rates increasing in 2023, so 5.3% overall for your total margin. When we come back next year and report, you'll see for 2023, when we include our comparatives, that the hospital's going to compare very favorably to what we saw. 2022 ended up being a fairly good year across healthcare. There was also a lot of COVID and grant-related money that was reported in 2022. 2023, there was really nothing reported, so that's where you see a little bit of the dip there. It's really that COVID and other grant-related funds kind of dropping off and us getting back to what we would have seen back to 2020 and pre-recording from those grant-related funds. Operating EBITDA, so this adds back in depreciation and amortization. We're at 9.7%. You can see our comparison, CLA clients at about 6%, Minnesota Critical Access 16%. Now, again, looking back a year, that there's some COVID money in there, so I think 2023 at 10%, still a good number to end that. Days cash on hand, and in the year, at 378 days cash on hand, very strong when you look at the comparatives that we have included there. So organization is in a strong cash position, which will come in helpful with some of the commitments made related to the MOB project and other capital outlays. Net days in accounts receivable, how long it takes to collect your revenue. Organizations at 54 days, a slight uptick from 53 days in 2022, less than 55 days in 2021, and in the ballpark of what we see for other healthcare-like healthcare facilities, maybe a little bit of opportunity to squeeze a few days out of that revenue cycle and get the cash in the door a little bit quicker, but definitely not outside of where we. 2020 is that outlier year where the world shut down for a few months and there really wasn't any revenue to collect, so that's why you saw 34 days in 2020. Percentage of AR over 90 days. This is something that we look at when we're trying to value the AR. We know that as the AR gets older, it's harder to collect, so we focus a lot of our time looking at the older AR to make sure that it is collectible. What you can see compared to 2022 and 2023, in total, about 13% of the organization's AR was over 90 days in 2022, and it went down to 12% in 2023. Our comparisons at about 18%, so you're doing a nice job. Hospital's doing a nice job of collecting the AR or not letting that AR get over 90 days, making sure that there's a process in place to stay on, you know, individuals or payers, to make sure that those amounts are collected timely to avoid any potential negative downstream collections down the road. Debt to capitalization, this measures, it's a leverage ratio, it just measures the proportion of long-term debt divided by a long-term debt plus total net assets. Higher values imply a greater reliance on debt financing. Now, this was pre-debt for the MOB project, but you're at 10% in 2023. You can see in 2020, it's 17%. So as you continue to pay that debt down and build up your net assets, you can see that that number's fairly low. Again, when we look at this and you can see the comparisons, it just shows that the organization was in a position to, you know, issue debt and obtain some additional leverage. Last slide, average age of plant. This measures the approximate average age of an organization's fixed assets. We're at about 12 years in 2023. If you look at the peers here, they're anywhere from about 12.6 to 13.8, so the organization has done a nice job of continuing investment in facilities and making sure that, you know, as a capital-intensive industry in healthcare, that you're standing on top of the necessary investment in the capital, because that's very important when it comes to, you know, patient satisfaction, safety, et cetera. I went through those very quickly. Any questions for me as it relates to the ratios or any of the other reports that were provided?
John, did you have any comments at this point?
No, other than, you know, if you do have questions on the financials or the board packet, please reach out to me. I like to talk about that stuff. I know it was difficult tonight to see it, but I think you heard it pretty well that we're proud of our performance and our track record, and once again, thank you for your support on the medical office building project, and we're excited to see that move along. So, thank you.
John, one quick.
My information's in the back of the board packet, so at any point in time, if anyone has any questions as it relates to the financial statements or whatnot, I'm happy to field any questions offline. So again, appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all tonight, and hope you enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. I'm sorry we didn't have it up for the council here to see, but everybody had their notepads and whatnot on, so that was good. One question that I just wrote down because I didn't know, under the. One question that I just wrote down because I didn't know, under the material weakness, just a question for John. Are you a CPA?
No, I'm not.
You're not?
Nope. And truth be told, accounting is not my favorite topic. I love finance, so, but I always joke I'm not good with numbers. That's why I'm the CFO. So, no, I am not a CPA.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, I think a motion to accept the audit would be in order.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion Jenny, second by Scott. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. What's that? No.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And counsel, please remember, if you have any questions, please ask. This was a little bit out of the ordinary, and so we appreciate John's time, and we'll move along to the next item. Which, next up, city budgets and SMART goals. We have a two thousand and twenty-four levy resolution that is in your packet. As a reminder, we had our last meeting that we discussed and happened. We did have open comment allowed at that time, and there was none, no residents here to make any statements. And so we do have a resolution with the, I'm going to forget the percentage, Steve, off the top of my head. Five-five-nine was the percent, and the dollar amount also was included in the resolution.
So this is setting the property tax levy?
Okay. This is setting the property taxed levy. Then after that is completed, then we'll have the actual budget. Counsel wish to take action on the resolution?
I want to introduce the resolution approving that two thousand and twenty-three tax levy collectible in two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Any final discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Grunig.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
That resolution carries unanimously. Next, we have the two thousand and twenty-four City of Wyndham budget. Steve?
Yep, the budget was sent out in the last packet, and we went through that. As you noted, the council had several budget hearings, and we had our truth and taxation meeting last meeting, so we're basically just looking for a motion to approve that budget that was presented to you and reviewed at the truth and taxation meeting last meeting.
Counsel wish to take action?
I'll make a motion to accept the two thousand and twenty-four budget packet.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jenny to approve the two thousand and twenty-four City of Wyndham budget. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. That budget carries. Two thousand and twenty-three dashboard report.
Okay, in your packets and now thankfully on the screen, we had the two thousand and twenty-three SMART goals that were approved last year. What this color chart is in your council packet basically is just a status report of where those goals are, if they've been completed or mostly completed, half-done, that kind of thing, and then notes on the comments, so you can kind of take a look at that in your packet and see where we're at with the two thousand and twenty-three. You can see that, you know, pretty decent progress is made, a number of them, approximately half of them were completed. There's a few in the about seventy-five percent completed. There's a number of others that are still underway, either multi-year goals or not yet completed but in process, and so all those are listed here in that dashboard report.
Steve, did you have any of those SMART goals that were any, you know, very concerning or anything in that manner?
No, for the twenty-three stuff, we didn't see any that were eliminated or pulled out for whatever reason, so we were good to go with those.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Do we need a motion to accept the dashboard report?
Nope.
Okay.
That's just a status update.
Thank you. Two thousand and twenty-four SMART goals.
Okay, as you probably many know, we've been doing SMART goals now for a number of years. This provides kind of a bit of roadmap on projects that people are going to kind of be undertaking next year. It also gives another opportunity for boards and commissions to provide some input into the city operations and the departments, facilities that they oversee. And so in your packet is a large number of SMART goals that you'll see moving for two thousand and twenty-four. Each one is on its own form, and so these have been put together by various departments and then brought through their boards, commissions, that kind of thing, and then brought to you for your, essentially your approval this evening. I don't know if anybody has any particular questions on any of them, but I can certainly answer what I can.
I know Marv Grunig looks at these and reads every single one of them. Marv, did you have any comments tonight of what you thought compared to previous years?
Well, they're all really good goals that worked for. The one that I picked out was my old department, the electric, and we've spent a lot of time trying to identify equipment, and that's one of the goals. But too much identification can kind of look like graffiti at a point, so there's a real fine line there, but I know Jason and Drew do a great job, so.
And some of that is tied into our GIS system, so knowing where every pole is, where every fire hydrant is, where every catch basin is, our building and zoning, Andy's here tonight, you can use it for rental inspection, you can use it for building permit, we use it for telecom, so there's a lot of use in that system, so identifying all those facilities is, you know, pretty important for that as well.
I think it probably depends on the time and that the person that's doing it puts the identification on and does a nice job doing it, so.
Just want to remind people they are goals and not demands, too. This is just something we shoot at so we can get a fix on what everybody's doing around with, around the community, and so it's not put out there that this stuff they have to get done, it's stuff they want to get done type of thing.
It's a path in a lot of pieces. There's a lot of steps to that, and this is just kind of a path, so.
Jenny?
I would just like to thank the department heads and the committees for going through these SMART goals and putting them together. You can tell that there was some time and effort put together to put the information in there, and I think it does, it's nice to have it written down and have that path or map as far as what different departments and what different groups are doing. So when we meet as, you know, different committees, that we have this kind of to go back to and say, hey, here's, you know, these are our goals for the year, and it's nice to see, you know, the graph that we had earlier to see where have we come through the year and how much have we accomplished, because that, you know, really says those groups and departments, you know, push to get these things done or, you know, are in the process of them. And some of them, it's just timing and materials and, you know, things like that that are out of their control, whether they got done in that timeframe or not, but thank you to the department heads for putting your effort into this.
Financing the goals also is a critical part. That is the council's job. Okay. Counsel wish to accept the SMART goals?
I'll make a motion to accept the SMART goals.
I'll second.
Motion Scott, second Jenny to approve the two thousand and twenty-four SMART goals. Any thoughts? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Not motion carries. Next, we have the two thousand and twenty-three budget amendments.
Let me get to that page, Mayor. Okay.
And please explain that, because end of the year, and now we have budget amendments. The purpose of that, Steve, if you would.
This is for the two thousand and twenty-three budget, so there are things that popped up during the year, and so to make sure that when we have the auditors come reviewing the books, they look at your budget, look at what you, you know, spent or what you took in as revenue, and that it, you know, is fairly close to budget. And so these are things that, you know, just we weren't aware of during the year, so budget amendments are all in your page, are in your packet, they're on one page. First one, I'll go through them all, but like the first one is building permit. You know, we looked at what our, you know, before, you can see the before column, we're estimating about forty-five thousand dollars of revenue. We're adjusting it up forty-eight thousand dollars, so the after number is ninety-three thousand. That's what we expect to take in in building permits. The change there was the medical office building. That building permit was forty-eight thousand dollars, so that essentially doubled what he brought in during the whole double of the year. So that's that one. And then the second one is state grants and aids. We took in four point four nine million dollars from that state assistance that we got. Two million got put into our wastewater fund to pay down that debt, and then two point four million was in that first tranche of money that we loaned out to the Wyndham Apartments. We didn't have that budgeted for the year. It was new money that came into the city and is going to go out, so we need to add that into it. And then we have police agreements and Mountain Lake. We had our community policing, for lack of a better term, maybe Scott's got a better term, for our time at the hospital. We had that renewed, and there was some cost adjustment in that that upped the amount of recovery there. And then when Officer Lewis Norrell went to Mountain Lake, we sold our canine vehicle and dog to Mountain Lake, and so we took some additional revenue off that. So again, we want to adjust the budget to allow for that increase. Next one, same thing, Wyndham Area Health Plan Review. Again, plan review fees, we estimated for the year at three thousand, the plan review fee for the hospital was thirty-four thousand, so we have a thirty-seven thousand dollar revenue on that, so that we adjusted that up. The next two have to deal with Lions Park Shelter. The city is acting as a fiscal agent. It's not our project, but they're running the donations through the city so that they're tax-exempt when people make the donations, and so the city holds those funds, and then when the Lions needed the money back to do their work on the shelter, we just turned those monies, turned back to them. We didn't budget for that because it wasn't a city project, we're just a fiscal agent, so it's an in and an out. So we, I have to have a budget amendment for that. The cul-de-sac project, that's that cul-de-sac that's been on the books for a few years over between Dollar General and the car wash. That's basically been a mind dot thing that we're waiting on some timing on that. We had funded that with some general fund reserve monies, and we're just moving that into our capital plan is all, so it's just shifting from one kind of bucket into another bucket, so there's no, no new cash or no new expenditures, expenditures, it's just simply moving categories. And then you've got transfer state appropriation to sewer, that's that two million dollars that we got from the state in revenue. We shifted two million of that over to that sewer fund so we can make that debt payment. So again, we had to show that as an expense that we put out. And then the next one is transfer to close two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and seven street project. Cheryl went over that with you, I think, last year during budget time. That bond was coming to a close, and the amount of assessments and things like that that were on that project, maybe some cost overrun, wasn't completely funded through that bond, so we had a deficit in that fund, so we used general fund dollars to cover that deficit. This is that transfer now to close that out. And then the last, last one on the fund is the exact same amount, and that's just moving it essentially from one, from the general fund reserve fund over to the bond payment fund. You're just moving those dollars over to that one. That's why those two numbers are the same. One's in the end, one's a positive, one's a negative number, it's just in, in, and an out. So those are the budget adjustments that we're requesting the council approve so we can get that squared away with the two thousand and twenty-three books.
Counsel have any questions on the amendments at all? Does the council wish to take action?
I would make the motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-three budget amendments.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jim. Any final comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Scott will come up, the chief is here to make a budget request. Which budget?
In two thousand and twenty, money was appropriated to purchase tasers, and we've been making the payment to them on a yearly basis. It's my recommendation that we could pay that off. This year, we had some vacancies in staff that left some extra money available. I consulted with our finance department, and they believe we could make this payment and still remain under budget. So that's my recommendation, we could get this off the books, and it will help us in future budgets.
Counsel have any questions for Scott? If not, motion would be in order to, I hope, approve that amendment.
I'll make the motion to approve the police budget request.
I'll second.
Motion Scott, seconded by Jenny. Any further discussions or questions for Scott? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Next, Andy's here to tell us about the first reading of ordinance number one ninety-seven second series, amending the existing city code.
Yes, Andrew Spelman, building and zoning official. So there's a number of amendments in there. It's a little bit hard to get through, so I'll explain them all as briefly as I can, I guess. So the first one that was included in your packet, I think I have them in order, is, this is way up in the front of our code, section ten ninety-nine. All of the highlighted language, which is quite a bit, is all brand-new language to that code. This is the one that just talks about penalties, the violation of our code. Since this is in the beginning of our code, this covers the entire code book. And so on the city attorney's recommendation was to add this additional language, since this section covers the entire code, and there are several sections of code where it may be necessary for the city to take action, and when we do, this new amendment is going to allow us to recover all of our costs, and if those costs aren't received, then we can assess the property. So the first, the first two there that are all highlighted, those are on the city attorney's recommendation in section ten ninety-nine of city code. And I don't know how I would want to handle these, Steve, run through all of them in one motion? Okay. So the second set of code amendments are coming out of actually our water wastewater section. It's a little bit odd for me to be presenting those, but these kind of track back to our water connection permit fee, water connection inspection permits, sewer connection inspection permits, and street excavation permits. And just some general questions from staff as to when these apply. And really, the process was becoming a little bit unclear to city staff, contractors, homeowners, and so we wanted to try to clean that up. So we started with going to the utility commission with basically two proposals, one for a new utility installation permit, which would cover any utility work that happens, whether it's on a property or in the street, your sewer main, your water main, if that needs to be replaced or repaired, we would have a permit for that. And then a second, street excavation permit. The process right now is street excavation permits have no permit fee. We get a three hundred dollar deposit. It's the property owner's responsibility to restore that street surface back to its original condition. If they don't do that, and the city has to do it, then we keep that three hundred dollar deposit. That was starting to cause some issues. If the contractor came in and applied for the permit, then they were paying the deposit If the contractor came in and applied for the permit, then they were paying the deposit. And in that case, then homeowners maybe aren't aware that that's even a possibility. And then all of a sudden, they get a bill from the city, could be months later. And it's, it can be very expensive. The $300 deposit is just nowhere close to covering that cost anymore. Just the, the labor costs and material costs are so high. So since I'm the point of contact for that, I kind of was the one that had to deal with most of those questions. And, and that's kind of why I started working with John and Ryan on all of this. So with that, we developed a new permit. We're not permitting new things. It's just a new form that's hopefully more clear, easier to understand. And then the, the most important part is the actual permit. Every other permit we have, there's an application. Once that's approved, you get a permit. That permit very clearly identifies what inspections are required, when the city needs to be involved. That, that always missing from our current process. So hopefully, we've cleaned that up. It'll make it easier and more, more clear. So with that, I started looking in code just to make sure that what we're, what we're asking for in our permits and what we're doing, that code supports it, or that we're following our code with our permits. So the first one there, 55, no, skip past it, the top one there, 54.02. This language exists in code, chapter 54 is our water. And 5402 starts talking about the responsibility of the water line, where the property owner's responsibility starts for repairs of leaks and all of those things. The only amendment there is where it's highlighted that says property owner. The current code says consumer or property owner. And city attorney's recommendation was to delete consumer because it is the property owner. In the case of a rental property, it wouldn't be the tenant that's responsible. So just simply deleting the word consumer there. The next one down, 55.04, chapter 55 in our code, is our sewers. And this is all new language, and it's meant to kind of mimic section 54 in our water code. Section 54 pretty clearly defines where responsibility starts and stop and requiring a repair of, of the line. That never existed in our sewer code. So we're adding 55.04 into, into code to kind of mimic and mirror what we're doing with our water. This is new, but this does follow standard practices and, and policies that we have in place now. So it's kind of taking policy and putting it into code. The next one is chapter 56. I guess for no other reason than apparently I like reading code, so I just kept going. And I realized that chapter 56 is titled Individual Sewage Treatment Systems. And in that, our current code calls for a permit to be issued by the city and for city staff to inspect those installations. It's also referring to MPCW PC40 regulations, which are very, very outdated. City does not have any staff that are actually certified to inspect individual sewage treatment systems. So we really had two choices. One was to just delete chapter 56 in its entirety. The second option was to delete chapter 56 and then rework it a little bit to kind of start laying out some parameters of whether we would allow individual sewage treatment systems in the city. If there's current ones, whether they'd be allowed to remain if property is annexed and they have an individual system, can that remain? Or do we require them to connect to the city? So the utility commission recommendation was to try and rework this to kind of go with the alternative. If they're there and they're compliant, really, at the end of the day, we want a safe place for disposal. And if there is a system there that's, that's installed correctly and it's working properly, to possibly let that, that system remain in place. So that's really what we're doing in chapter 56. It establishes when, under what conditions, systems would be allowed to be either installed or remain in place. And then it defers all the permitting and inspections to, to Cottonwood County, basically the Soil and Water District. We did meet, Ryan and I did meet with, with Becky Buckle. She's the, the one who really does all this with, with the county. And our, our code now kind of defers all of that to, to them. We're also going to require, I think it's every three years, an inspection of a system to make sure that it remains compliant and, and functional.
I've got questions. I want to start with the water one.
Okay.
And that's in regards to the ownership part of it. Is that up to the service line valve at the edge of the property? Or you may call it curb stop in there? And I'm wondering, I think that's what it's saying, correct? Up to the curb stop?
Correct.
And my concern is that after that, I believe anyway currently that the city's owns the water meters as well. The meters, yes, the meters in the house the city owns. How can you have that separation of the line in between then as the property owners? And then it reverts back to the city as far as the meters?
I don't know. I don't know that that question was asked. And I don't know that we really spent a lot of time considering amending chapter 5402. The, the real purpose of this was, 5402 was given to the city attorney to kind of explain why we're making the amendment to chapter 55. And then when he read through it, he said, wait, we need to get rid of that word consumer.
Well, I agree with that totally.
So I don't know that that was all considered. And I don't know how the ownership is handled or anything like that.
But we would be able to comment on that after, this is just the first reading.
Correct.
So comments or changes could be made. My second one was on the sewer. Do we have any individual on-site systems within city limits?
Marv was at all of the utility commission meetings, and we tried to think of a good example. And I don't know if we really, I believe that there is a commercial property southeast part of town that is in city limits and does have an individual system. And I know that this question has came up with properties that are annexed. It's been told to me that if you're within 300 feet, you have to connect to the city. I struggle to find that in code.
I can help you with that.
Okay.
But because I've looked at it several times, and I wondered why some of this happened or didn't happen. And then as well with the sewer part of it, I guess that was my second comment, was the 300 feet. So, okay.
Yeah, and in, in here, we, we have 500 feet. And I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm the one that wrote this. And 500 feet was just a number that I picked. We talked about it at utility commission, and there was some talk of 300 or 600. And 500 is what stuck. I don't know that that's based on really anything.
And the problem is, you've got to look at the plumbing code, the state of Minnesota plumbing code, which adopts, I believe, is 10 state standards. Anyway, you've answered my questions on that.
Yep. And, and that's a good point with the plumbing code, and that's something we did look at. I looked at quite a bit with, with the permitting as far as the, the service lines. Currently, right now, we, we don't really have an opportunity to inspect those and, and look at those. If the work isn't happening in the streets or in the right-of-way, and somebody's just replacing a line, we're uninvolved. And that is covered under the plumbing code, and there are things that we should be looking at. The new process will hopefully clear that up a little bit. As far as the individual treatment systems, the plumbing code wants a safe place of disposal. And it, it doesn't get into these too much because they're regulated so much, so much further. But they would be allowed under the plumbing code.
And some of the, the instances that I've had to deal with is that the Department of Health took care of, used to take care of some of the plumbing code.
Yep.
However, that's all been shifted to Department of Labor now. And it's being very, it's very as it states in the plumbing code, so.
Yeah, once, once you hit the property line, it comes out of Department of Health and into the plumbing code, which is under DLI. When Department of Commerce took over, when Department of Commerce gave up the building code to DLI, then plumbing code followed suit.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll let you continue. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and the, the important thing with chapter 56 is that what we have now is just so outdated and, and not applicable, so.
Another question on that was the, are septic tanks allowed? A sealed, contained septic tank that can only be pumped? That'd be another question I'd have to ask.
Yep. I can't answer that because all of this would have to be permitted through the county. It would be the county that has to approve it in the end. They have to be, whatever, whatever the system is, so depending on the soil type and everything else, that it has to be a, an approved system designed for that site of a septic tank. What's the bill?
Unfortunately, it does.
Okay.
And I would say that the city should be more restrictive in that. Understand that, but.
Yeah, we can be more restrictive so we can look into the septic tank thing a little closer. 150, okay. So, yeah, this is what I was hoping we wouldn't have to do, but I was certain we would have to do when we made our, our last big land use code revision. So basically, what happened was when we did our, our subdivision land use code review, we were working off of a Word document. If you remember, when I presented to the council, we had the entire code. Highlighted language was new language. We struck out the, the old language. It was just a way to try and make it more clear exactly what was going in and coming out of code. What we realized was that the Word document we had did not match our code exactly as it was. So what was adopted by the council had a couple small revisions from real recent years that weren't in the Word document we were working off of. So a few things got inadvertently left out. Chapter 150.16 is permits required. This is just talking about moving a building. There was an exception that was added last year. And, and this was added just because now we have zoning permits, we have building permits. We, we didn't want to double up on people for permits. So a moving permit is required unless you've already received another permit, manufactured home permit, or a, a building permit, or a zoning permit. So a, a good example would actually be a, a small storage shed that was moved from the west side of town to the east side of town last week. That person came in to apply for a, a moving permit. Well, he also needed a zoning permit to install that on the new lot. We're not going to double up on both of them, so you get the zoning permit, that covers it. So the second one there, under B, that's just adding the exception that we just talked about. So it's on off of the move a building unless what we just talked about applies. So that was an amendment that was made last year, and it just, it wasn't in the Word document that we were working off of. Accessory structures and residential districts. A states, so the only difference in A, that's the exact language that's in current code right now. What was adopted the last time though, still referenced the building that was 200 square feet and building permits. So this is an amendment that was made just a couple of years ago when we, when we adopted our zoning permits. So every building in Wyndham right now requires a permit, whether it's a building permit or zoning permit. It used to be under 200 square feet, didn't require a permit at all. So that was an amendment that was made a couple of years ago when we started doing the zoning permits. It just wasn't in the draft that, that was approved by the council, this last amendment. And then B is kind of a, kind of a big one actually. The accessory structures should be used exclusively for storage of household yard and, and related supplies and equipment. That provision used to be in every residential district, AO, I think it was in R1, R2, R3. We had a subsection that talked about accessory buildings. And a lot of that language, that, that subsection was deleted. The language was moved into a chart and a table. And that provision was just inadvertently left out of what was approved. So we want to add that back in, but we want to put it back in, the accessory structures part. When we add in B, now everything else has to shift down. So everything else, which looks like quite a bit, it's just relettering. B becomes C, C becomes D. And then there's some references in there that have to change, that they're referencing the right things. So I'm hopeful, probably not terribly confident that this is the last of these. As we get going through the code and, and start applying it to specific projects, we may find more of these things. It just, it's kind of the way it is. But these are the first ones we saw that actually came up because of projects that we've been dealing with since that code was adopted. Once we realized that issue was happening, we, we spent a lot of time looking. And I, I hope that we have caught them all. It was just a, a mistake right from the beginning that the version we were working off of did not have the last year or two's worth of these minor amendments in it. So that's, that's what I have for you.
Any questions for Andy?
The, I guess I should say that these have all been reviewed, approved by a city attorney. All of the, the water wastewater ones that we talked about, I think I was at utility commission three or four times. You know, once just asking for direction on different things, once for the first round, and then they had some proposed changes as well. So they have all been approved by the utility commission and the planning commission as well.
Okay, would the council want to act on the first reading of ordinance number 197, second series, amending existing city code?
I would make the motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 197, second series.
I'll second that.
Marv makes the motion to approve, and Dennis with the second. Any other discussion? This is just a motion at this time, correct? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, four of one absent. Okay.
I'll try to get clarification on those questions, and then I'll come back in January for a second reading.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, next one, we have a resolution decertifying TIF 1-19 Northwest Industrial Park 2. Tiffany, how are you?
Good, Tiffany Lamb, EDA Director. So what I have to the council tonight is resolution approving decertification of TIF District 1-19. This TIF district was originally created on August 18th of 2015, and then modified for additional parcels in 2016, early in that year. It's locally known as the North Wyndham Industrial Park 2 District. Covers a fairly large portion of the North Wyndham Industrial Park, as well as the, the Phase 2 portion. It is on the east side of Commerce Boulevard and then the south side of Opportunity Drive. This was an economic development district. Basically, with the Minnesota statutes and the TIF plan, it established an expiration date for the district of eight years after the receipt of the first tax increment, unless the obligations of the district were met prior to that time. So the first tax increment was received July 2017. That means eight years from that July 2017 date, or once all obligations of the TIF district were met. We were informed by LERS that all of those obligations have been met, which means that we're required to decertify the TIF district at this point, since all of the obligations related to the contract for private redevelopment have been satisfied. LERS has determined that there are sufficient funds in place for the district's accounts to pay the future bond obligations for the property. The, so the obligations all. property. The, so the obligations altogether are going to be satisfied, or arrangement made to satisfy them by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So pursuant to Minnesota statutes and the TIF plan for the district, we're looking to decertify the district with the Cottonwood County Auditor effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The EDA Board did adopt a resolution on December eleventh of twenty-three, approving the decertification of the TIF District, which means that the next step is for the council to adopt a similar resolution approving the decertification of that TIF District.
First, any questions for Tiffany? I think it was explained very well. Council wish to take action on the resolution.
I would introduce the resolution approving the decertification of Tax Increment Financing District, number one dash one nine.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv, second by Dennis. Any discussion or additional questions? Yeah. All right, hearing none, a federal call.
Espen.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Grunig.
Yes.
Benson.
Quaid.
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next, John is here to discuss a liquor store committee recommendation alternative for awning.
I don't know.
Awning replacement.
John Nelson, liquor store manager. I'm here with a liquor committee recommendation to accept the low quote from Scenic Sign Corp. of eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for installing illuminated channel letters on the front and back of the liquor store, along with a proposal from Sustern Construction, who is a contractor on the expansion project of five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the repairs and resurfacing of the ephes on the front of the building. In the past, we've noticed that there is need for repair or replacement of the current awning that's on the front of the building. I did send a picture to Steve, and I can pass it around on my phone if you guys would like to see it. It is in poor condition, the vinyl's breaking loose, and it looks bad. So it's time to upgrade it. Discussion was that if we did the vestibule, there was no need to do it, so we kind of put it on hold. I reached out in September, I reached out to Scenic Sign Corp. to discuss repairs to the awning. I also reached out to a local businessman who did some awnings as well, and he had lots of issues finding a local contractor that could do awnings for him, and he had a heck of a time doing it. So I met with Darrell of Scenic Sign Corp. and reviewed a couple of options, including recovering of the awning. We also discussed the idea of updating to a more modern signage. He quoted all options for me. The cost to recover the awning alone, to remove it, take it to a place, have it recovered, bring it back and install it, was seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. Whereas to put channel, channel, illuminated channel letters on the front, he had a cost of thirteen thousand two forty-five, which included him removing the awning, and then have a contractor repair the ephes on the front of the building because there'll be a lot of additional holes from where all the awnings were mounted, mounted to the building. Had been with the general contractor in the liquor store project and discussed it with him. They provided a proposal in which they would remove the awning, patch the existing holes, and recoat the upper portion of the ephes, and then pressure wash the lower portion for five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. With that, with the contractor doing the removal of the awning, Scenic Sign Corp. amended their proposal of ten thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. He provided quotes to do the front and the back. If we did both of the signs at the same time, it would reduce the cost of the sign to nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. So little under a thousand dollar savings per sign. So both signs, front and back, would be done for eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. I did get a second quote from AP Design out of Marshall, and their quote for the two signs was twenty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So it was recommended to go with channel, illuminated channel letters on the front and back of the building from Scenic Sign Corp. for eighteen thousand five ninety, and then have Sustern Construction do the recoat and repair of the ephes on the front for a total of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And I did the packet, get the, what the signs would look like on the front and the back. So that would be what the, the picture on the right is what the current awning looks like, and then that's how it would look during the day versus at night. And then it would be the same thing, the next page is on the south, right above the new doors. So that's how it would look coming in from the south.
Those are lit at night, right?
Yep, they would be lit with our photocell, so at night they would turn on.
Well, you know, I'd have some questions. And I'm, I'm wondering, is, is part of this that you discussed with the contractor, is that a change order?
It is not a change order, it's a separate item.
Outside of the contract?
Yes.
Okay. And was this discussed or in the CIP when this project was started?
We knew there was need for the awning replacement. We did not have anything budgeted. My plan is to pay the cost of the eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars out of the twenty twenty-three budget. We do have.
Out of this year's?
Yep, we do have extra revenues. So that's where that'll be paid for out of. The, it requires a fifty percent deposit, but we just pay it all. So that's out of this year's budget. And then the work for the ephes repair won't be due until the work is done, which will most likely be next spring. So none of this will get done until next spring.
But you're going to utilize the, this year's budget for that?
For the expense of the signage, yes.
Is that taking an adjustment on the budget then, technically?
No, he's got operational dollars already budgeted, and if he can fit it in with the under that, then he's got those.
So it's really next year's budget.
It's really, he's spending it out of twenty-three's budget, but it's not going to be installed to a twenty-four. It's like buying a piece of, buying a hundred gallons of fuel now, but pumping it out and selling it next year. The expenses this year and the other part would occur next year, so. So it's not a budget.
You knew I'd have questions, right? Council wish to take action.
John, do you know on, as far as the awning, did that live its life expectancy, or?
Steve and I were discussing that today. We're thinking that awning was probably put on when the roof was done in the early to mid-two thousands, so we're estimating that awning is about twenty years old. The illuminated channel letters do come with a twenty, or a ten-year parts and labor warranty. So one hundred percent of parts and labor are covered by, if anything would malfunction with it within ten years.
Yeah, that, that was put on when the major roof was done. That was on the council.
Yeah, and it's, it's something I've looked at since I've been here in twenty eighteen that, you know, the logo underneath liquor is peeling off, and the edges, the seams are coming loose, and so it's been a need, but, you know, if we were going to do something different to the front of the liquor store, there's no sense spending money at that time, so.
Part, part of the discussion too was to find out what was going to go on with the vestibule.
Yeah.
Because if you'd have built a vestibule, then the awning would have come down, and then there would have been the discussion of what to do at that point. Since we didn't build the vestibule, now the awning is there. So do you want to keep that and recover it so it looks decent with the rest of your nice building, or do you want to go a different direction on signage? That's really where they're at.
I understand the question. I just, it just, no, it, it seems, it's like we're designing as we're going, and I'm wondering if there's anything on your radar that you need to look at in the, you know, coming in the next couple of months or something. Is there anything else outstanding at this time? I know you can run into things, but.
As far as, we do have a few pending change orders. Most, two of them are a deduct, the other is an increase of five hundred and thirty dollars for, per code review, needs to have carbon monoxide alarms installed. But as for major things, the only thing that I see is the landscape, and that'll be something next year, so.
I remember you saying you'd donate that time, but maybe.
We can try, but it won't look as nice. I can tell you that.
All right. I can try. No, not to do the landscape, to have you do it.
Yeah.
But anyway, okay, Marv?
Just my concern with the awning is, if it didn't last, why would we improve it again? Let's just put new lettering up.
And my comment is just, I think the lighted signs are going to be much better. You know, the lighting around that whole building has been very poor. A lot of the lights don't even work around the building. So once this is all done and all the lighting, this is going to stand out. And I think we debated on, do we spend the extra and do it on the backside of the building? And it's like now with that traffic slowing down and piling up from QuickTrip, you know, coming in, into town that direction, that, seeing that liquor store sign is going to make a big difference, I think, in attracting people as they're waiting on the highway there, saying, oh, well, here's the liquor store, we could just pull in. So I think this is going to be well, money well spent to have this lighted.
I do, I think it'll be good for that. I'm just wondering, are the energy efficient lighting?
It's all LED.
Okay. Jason was kind of questioning that. All right.
Seven thousand K LED handlit white lighting.
Council wish to take action.
I would make a motion to approve the installation of the channel lighting and proposal for repairs.
I would second.
Motion Jenny, second by Marv. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Thanks, John. Okay. Twenty twenty-four municipal rate for street lighting. Oh my gosh. Municipal rate for street lighting. Are they going to up our price, Steve?
Of course.
We'll see if the council approves that one.
Jason Segar, electric superintendent. So in the packet was action memo that was put together. So we are doing rate increases across the board for everything coming up here. One of them is the utility street lighting rates, which the council has the power to approve. So just bringing it forward to the council to let them know that the recommendation was to increase that a few cents each year up to fifteen point three cents by twenty twenty-six.
What's the annual cost approximately? Do you have an idea?
Well.
I didn't see that. Well.
So there's a.
Yep.
Yep.
All the annual cost, I mean, they just gradually goes up. By twenty twenty-six, the annual cost will be twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Currently, the annual cost is about nineteen thousand dollars, I believe. So.
Okay, I think we need a, a motion to approve that.
I would make the motion to approve the new street lighting proposal.
I'm looking for a second. Are you doing this on purpose with this setup? Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
It almost died for lack of second. Okay, did Marv make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, second by Dennis. Thank you, Dennis, for that second. Any discussion?
So that comes through the street department budget, which is general fund revenue.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Doesn't get bad.
No. It's part of, it's part of the property tax levy, yes, but it, but it doesn't go on there into the bill.
Okay, we had a motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Did you say aye, Jim? Okay, it was four. Thank you, motion carries. Anything else you'd like to charge us for tonight? Okay, thank, thank you. All right. I'm already in trouble now, so we might as well stay till eight o'clock. I missed the Christmas program. Okay. Kindergarten. I'm gone. Yep. Okay, next, personnel committee, LELS memorandum of agreement, which Steve will tackle here.
Yep. As, just as your memo stated, there was a typo in the contract that we approved. There was a reduction in the single and family policy holder amount the city paid for health insurance. That was, there was miscalculation on the contract. It's easy, the numbers were eights and threes, eight, three, 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 and it should have been eight, 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 three. So it was a five hundred and fifty dollar number that was off. So what we want to do is just adopt a memorandum of agreement, essentially to make the number correct, which is eight hundred and eighty-three dollars annually for a single policy holder rather than eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. So simple typo fix.
I would make a motion to fix the typographical error in the LELS memorandum of agreement.
Second. Motion Jenny, second by Jim, to approve the.
MOA.
MOA. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Officer assistant hiring recommendations.
So yeah, so we've had a part-time office position in City Hall, been vacant for a while. So, yep, Kim's not here. So Cheryl had started doing some interviews and didn't really have any real wonderful candidates, and then we were making transition to Kim, so she wanted Kim to be involved in that. So Kim then, we kept the ad running and had some other applicants, and so they did some interviews, and she's recommending hiring Mackenzie Sureska at Step One, which is sixteen seventy-eight an hour for our part-time administrative assistant position with the start date of January second.
I'd make the motion to approve the new office assistant hiring recommendation.
Motion Marv, second by Dennis, to approve the office assistant hiring recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Earn, sick, and safe time policy.
How much time do you have, Mayor? So.
Well, everybody should have read their packets.
Okay. So the Minnesota Legislature, in their infinite wisdom, passed a new safe and sick time law, essentially. This provides one hour of leave for every thirty hours worked for all employees. There was. Um, there was not a exemption or a carve-out for businesses, employers that already provide this. This was a blanket um type of uh initiative on the state's part. So this will apply to part-time employees. It will apply to firefighters and EMTs and full-time employees, but not elected officials. So just so you know. Um, so what this is, is we had to develop a policy. The Minnesota League of Cities had developed a model policy. So we took that model policy, typed in the particulars for Wyndham, and then had that reviewed by our uh attorney from Flaherty and Hood. And I made a couple of technical uh changes to the policy uh that was shared with the Personnel Committee. And so um the policy is attached. We're asking for your approval of that. Um, there may or may not, this is kind of an evolving thing as all cities are trying to scramble and get something in place. Um, it is effective January one. Um, so it's been a fairly short time. Department of Labor is still issuing some um answers to questions, things like that, but we need to get it in place so we can get our payroll system all set up and everything ready to go January one. So um this will apply, as I mentioned, to all employees. So if you're a part-time person, you'll accrue some leave, which we, you know, right now, part-time people don't accrue any leave. So as I noted in the financial impact section of this, you know, if we do have, you know, we have a handful of part-time employees. John's got some at the liquor store. We've got, we just hired one in the city office. Um, they will start accumulating one hour of leave for every thirty hours worked.
Some are employees as well.
Some are employees as well, yep. So lifeguards, folks like that, yep. So um you have to work at least eighty hours in a year to qualify for it, okay? And then there's a maximum of forty-eight hours that can be earned. So you'd uh you'd have to work fourteen hundred and forty hours to max that out, okay?
So my question would be, does it start accruing after the eighty hours or is it immediately on unemployment?
It will start accruing as you work, but our determination is you won't be eligible to use it until you've at least worked eighty hours. So if you're a lifeguard and you work two weeks and accrue one hour, but you've only worked, you know, forty hours in that period, you have that hour in your bank, but you can't use it until after you hit that eighty-hour mark. It's.
Then why are we accruing it?
Exactly why you're accruing it, but you have to accrue it. You have to show it to the employee on their payroll. That's in the statute, so. All employees. Yep, because they're already full-time employees, so they already get a say, they already get sick leave. So this is not an additional leave. This is just a different, this is just a kind of an expanded use. So um currently, full-time employees, supervisors, union employees, whomever that are full-time currently get a day of month essentially. So you get ninety-six hours in a year of sick leave. This states earn safe and sick team, sickly sick time has some expanded definitions of how you can use that. So rather than expand the definitions for all ninety-six hours, we're essentially having two buckets where that ninety-six hours, forty-eight hours are going to the earn sick time bucket, forty-eight hours are going to the regular sick leave bucket. So you'll still get the ninety-six hours. It'll just be split in two different buckets.
I sure is nice that we got a government, isn't it?
You're part of the government, Jim.
So uh Personnel Committee, we did talk about this, and it was to go ahead and um basically adopt policy as required by statute, have it reviewed by the uh legal, which we've done, and now it's here presented to you. I have talked to um one of the uh union representatives on it. They didn't really have too many questions of it. The only one tweak we might need is um, because right now you, if you are a retiring employee, you get paid out half your sick leave, but the earned sick time has no value by state statute. There's not a payout of it. Well, if we're taking hours out of somebody's sick leave rather than putting it into that bucket where they would get paid out half at retirement, we have to figure out just a mechanism to, you know, make make that whole, but we can certainly do that. That's that's going to be a fairly minor tweak.
That show up like in a benefit pack? You know, as far as all benefits or is that above and beyond? I mean, it's, I realize everybody's going to get it.
Yep, full-time employees won't really see any advantage to it of additional, any additional leave, just that expanded use. There's other reasons you can use it. However, part-time employees that got nothing before for sick leave now will earn up to up to forty-eight hours of sick leave. And so as I was noting in my financial aspect, so if John had somebody at the liquor store that had a part-time person, they banked, let's say, four hours of leave and said, okay, I'm not coming in. Well, I'm going to use E S S T. They get paid that four hours, but then he's got to bring somebody else in to cover that four-hour shift. So there will be a cost to it, but until we know how many hours part-time employees work and how much gets used, it's really very difficult to estimate, you know, what what that financial impact would be. And this is a brand-new program, so nobody else has any better data than we do, so.
Do are the, is there a requirement they have to call in immediately on the day that they are?
There there is no, there is notification, and that's that's noted in in the policy. Yep, that you do, if you if you know, you do have to note notify the the employer and um right here, advanced notice for use of earn six safe time. So it's in the policy. That was part of the statute.
No, I understa- is there a time requirement? I mean, how do you know if you're gonna uh like by eight AM or is it by normal working hours or because you could be short staff? I mean, same as sick.
As the way this is written and the way the statute added, if the need is foreseeable, okay? So if you know that, hey, we had a snowstorm and school's going to be closed tomorrow, then I know a day ahead that my child is not going to school, but I can use E S S T leave to stay home with my child. I know school's going to be closer, then they can call and tell you, I'm not coming in tomorrow. I'm using my E S S T because I'm home watching my child because the school closed. That's advanced notice. But it's like any other sick, hey, I get up in the morning and I don't feel good. I can call in, you know, my before my regular scheduled shift, just like you use regular sick leave and let the employer know. So but if there's advanced, if you have knowledge of advancement, like, hey, I'm going to use it for an appointment that I have a week from next Tuesday, yes, you can let your employer know ahead of time.
What what happens then if they want to use eight hours, but they only have four? They still have to call somebody in to replace them.
You can only for, you can only use the for E S S T, you can only use what's in your what's in your accrual. So if you're a part-time person and you have four hours and you have a six-hour shift, you won't basically you'll get paid for the four hours of E S S T, but you won't get anything else. And yeah, we're still going to have to cover that shift. Now, if you're a full-time person, you can use, hey, I'm sick today. I'm going to use four hours of E S T and four hours of my regular sick leave, then you're still covered. And we'd have the same issue if it had all been sick leave, so.
Why didn't they just say you use your sick leave?
Because sick leave and earn safe and sick time have different definitions by state statutes.
Counsel action if you want to.
I would make a motion to approve the earn sick and safe time policy.
At least we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Thank you, Marv. Any discussion? Please don't make, I can't say that. I wasn't going to say, please don't have it a tie. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Contractor payments uh in change orders liquor store number two.
Yep, we just have.
Sussner Construction.
Thank, yep, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, the, we have one pay request for Sussner Construction, as you note. Um, it is pay request number two for one hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, the architects are recommending approval of the pay request, as is the liquor manager.
Is there a motion to approve this? Steve noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay request.
I'll second.
Motion Dennis, second Jim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. It said change order. We don't have one, though, do we?
No.
No, we do not. That's just the category that these would go under, so.
Thank goodness.
We amended it just because we starting to see a few of them, so she amended the category just to accommodate it.
That's probably advisable. We get quite a few of them change orders. New business, counsel? Any new business? Or Steve, anything we needed to bring up? No? Okay. Old business? Nothing there. Counsel comments? I'm going to make Jenny go last today. Jim?
I hope all the little kitties get what they want. The wives get what they want. The guys get enough underwear and socks for the next year. Merry Christmas to all.
Well said, Jim. Marv?
Prior to the meeting, I had a doubt this little uh newspaper from Minnesota American Legion. It's called the Legionnaire, and they did a write-up on Wyndham's Veterans Memorial. And there was a young lady from uh S T S U that provided uh photos for it. She's a graphics design photography student, also my granddaughter. She's been at this meeting several times, so she's got something published now, so she's happy. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Well, I got to interrupt there. Thank you to your granddaughter. I hope she's going to watch a copy of this tonight. We thank her uh for previously attending the meetings. I always enjoy that. Invite your grandkids. They, I think that'd be great. Make them politicians. Thank you. Dennis?
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and hopefully it was a good good time. That's all.
Thank you, Dennis. Steve, do you have anything tonight?
Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, because we will only be not be back before New Year, so have a happy and safe Christmas and New Year.
Jenny?
I actually, no, go ahead.
Okay, um I have one um update just to notify um from the Lions Club. Um, they wanted to let people know that they have ordered two overhead doors for the shelter um that have windows in them. Uh, they're hoping to get them in uh soon. And then the plan is that the doors, you know, would be open during the summer and close during the winter months down there. Um, they do, I think the cost of the door um is six thousand two hundred dollars plus installation. Um, they still would like two more doors yet to purchase for down there. Um, but what they currently purchased and have coming is going to drain their account that they have right now. So they still have a need out there for two more doors and funding for that. So um just a note from the Lions Club, so if you see some more things happening down there, that's what they're doing. Um, and then just a reminder and a big push, we have that name that plow contest um happening. The box is down here at City Hall. Um, you can drop off your name ideas for the three new plows that we're going to be getting. Um, luckily, we haven't had to do much plowing, so I mean, that's good for those of us that um appreciate not having snow just yet. Um, but it'll come. It's Minnesota. The snow is going to come. Uh, the new plows are going to come, but we need names for three plows. And so I really challenge people, when you get together for Christmas, this could be a fun thing. Um, have your family come up with some good names for our plows. And then all you need to do is put your name or your family name, um your address, just be a city of Wyndham resident, and the plow name, and stick it in even our night deposit box here, or come into City Hall and stick that in our little box for Name That Plow. Uh, that deadline is January fifth, so encourage you to name that plow. And then Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Very good. While you were talking, Jenny, I took a look at that article already in here and read the couple paragraphs. Uh, very well done. Nice pictures, well posted. I congratulate your granddaughter, Marv, and thank you from the City Council. Um, uh, for me, um, uh, this is an important time for family this time of year. I uh can't say enough about our community, a very welcoming welcoming community that we have. Uh, this year's been uh has some ups and downs, but uh I I believe we came through it well. So I really think we give thanks uh this this Christmas and uh Happy New Year uh coming up to everyone. Take care. That's it for twenty twenty-three from the Wyndham City Council.